Today is Tuesday, July 1st, 2025. At 6:00 PM, this meeting will be conducted in person in the Sanford City Council chambers and via remote video and teleconference pursuant to one MRSA Section 403B, 2D, and Section 6 of the Sanford City Council Rules of Procedure. Members of the public may join the meeting in person or remotely using the information posted on the meeting calendar on the city's website. Members of the public may also submit comments via the website under Government, City Council, Contact the Council. And look at the crowd here. I, you know, some of the men here that are dressed up, I'm looking, I don't see any fire woman here. Am I missing it? All right, but you guys look great, all dressed up. That's fantastic. I appreciate that. And so if you would all, including the babies, stand up and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
And I'm going to dedicate this meeting's moment of silence to all those people who are traveling this weekend, and hopefully they're all safe and secure, and people will have a fantastic vacation time. So if you'd just join me for a moment of silence. And now for roll call. Deputy Mayor Hurley, Council Martell.
Present.
Council Hitchcock.
Present.
Council Trenchmontane.
Present.
Council Hanselman.
Present.
Council Stackpole.
Present.
And I am Mayor Brink, and also present our City Manager Steve Buck and Executive Director Larissa Ricketts. And let's move on to the minutes and those, the next two sets of minutes, I cannot vote on because I was not present for those. So like in order to approve the minutes from the regular council meeting held on June 17th, 2025. Ann?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Pete?
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. In order to approve the minutes from the executive session of the City Council held on June 17th, 2025, may I have a motion? Nate?
So moved.
A second, please. Pete? Thank you. All those in favor? Thank you very much. There is no subcommittee meetings and no mayor's report. The City Managers' report?
Thank you. The first piece I want to bring up here this evening is it's a bill, it's LD 1829, called the Housing Bill. Legislature passed that. It's entitled "An Act to Build Housing for Main Families and Attract Workers to Main Businesses by Amending the Laws Governing Housing Density." So the governor signed the bill into law. Highlights contained within the law that our city now has one year to comply with by amending all of our ordinances effective July 1st, 2026. The bill does not contain a fiscal note allocating funds to reimburse, so when they passed the last LD for housing, they did have a fiscal note, and the city was reimbursed reasonable expenses for making those ordinance changes, but this bill does not. Highlights that I'm concerned about, or I want to point out here, have again circumvented and eroded our home rule authority. The bill preempts locally adopted fire suppression ordinances for any accessory dwelling unit unless the unit is within or attached to a structure of more than two dwellings. Even if the existing dwelling is required to have fire suppressing, the ancillary building would not, the accessory dwelling would not have to. Prevents municipalities from limiting any residential development through a rate of growth ordinance in a defined growth area, even when the growth area has been defined previously to enable incompatible commercial use or designations are designed to appropriately manage capital investment, i.e. if you're looking at your water sewer and your school infrastructure, it negates that. Requires all municipalities to allow 14 extra feet of height above existing height restrictions for any affordable housing development, subject only to review of municipal fire officials or designee. Requires the allowance of three dwelling units for any lot, including detached or attached, in four units if the lot is in a designated growth area. Additionally, the bill prevents the same from those lots from exceeding 5,000 square feet for the first four dwelling units on a lot. And you can't exceed 5,000 square feet for two dwelling units outside of the growth district. It changes the subdivision ordinance from three dwelling, three units to four as far as negating planning board review and approval. And it requires municipalities to amend subdivision ordinances to reflect the new requirements by July 1st, 2026. For your town meeting, you've got an additional year. Prevents a municipality from requiring the owner of a lot where an accessory dwelling unit is located to reside on the lot. I think our Airbnb ordinance, that's going to be negated. So there's a lot of other moving parts. I've discussed this with Jamie Cole already. We will have a busy year trying to adapt to these significant changes. I do note, as far as from a legal perspective, again, there was no fiscal note, so they've created a mandate forcing us to change our ordinances without that fiscal note, which is against the state's constitution. I fail. I just failed to see how the governor signed this and it went through in that regard, but we will find out more. There's some positive news in here, though, the state budget. There was, there was a citizens veto that was out there. They needed 67,682 votes to negate the Part 1 of the budget that was passed earlier this year. They failed to get those signatures, so that did not go through. The legislature has now passed the Part 2 budget. In looking at those two pieces, elements that are important to us is that they preserve the 55% for K-12 education. State municipal revenue sharing was preserved at the 5%, although they lowered their projections, homestead exemption, and to some extent, the revenue to county governments. So I won't get into the table. I've got a table in here of what's allocated in fiscal year 26 versus 27. I do note there's increases in the homestead exemption. I'm unaware yet as to why the county jails dropped by $4 million in year 2. Our GA reimbursement, they're scheduling 20.4 million in fiscal year 26, and dropping that to 12.4 million in fiscal year 27. So I've not been able to assess what those changes are yet, but I've put an inquiry in. Revenue sharing goes from 276 million in fiscal year 26 to 285. That's its normal progression. And they have 1.5 billion in there this year for K-12, with no allocation known yet for the second year of the biannual budget. All right. Changes to our bus routes. York County Community Action has given us notice that the WAVE Demand Response Service and the Orange Line regular bus route will be suspended for the weekend services. There just was not enough demand or utilization, so they had to cut off that ridership. They continue to review that and bring it back if the response demands that in the future.
So just as a note, the WAVE is the one that takes people to their jobs.
Correct.
And the Orange Line is the one that runs to the Wells Transportation Center.
Yes.
Thank you.
Homelessness and housing, we did not have a task force meeting this week, but there are, there's some more information. Our Communications Department of one person, right? Our communications person is developing a frequently asked questions article around what the city was doing for homelessness pre-COVID, what happened during the encampments, the post-COVID turnout of people that we had that had been housed in apartments, in rental units, in hotels and such, the loss of the opera funds, the current status of people who are refusing services, and the current focus on prevention. So there's a lot of information to get wrapped up into a FAQ article. She still has interviews pending with our General Assistance Director, as well as the Sanford Housing Authority, to wrap up the collection of that information. Once that article is done, it should be a comprehensive piece that will be going to the Sanford Main Connects, our website. She'll run some news stories on it and get that into the Main Street Memo and other avenues to disperse that. We continuously are asked, what is the city doing? We see certain people that remain unhoused. Why is that the case? And such and to that. So there's a lot of information to get into that article. She was originally talking about having to bust that into two or three different articles, and I asked not. Condense the information, but keep it in one article, because it's all inclusive. There's been a lot of action there. Worked with the Sanford Housing Authority, again, as late as today, on their future 30 units for the Housing First model that's to be developed off of Heritage Drive. There's currently Phase 1 and Phase 2 ongoing there to update those land parcels before they change ownership and go into a development. Also looking at, on the prevention side, where can our group muster further funds as far as housing navigation or assessment and prevention navigators to implement the coordination of our combined resources within the region? Family Shelter here in Sanford, still have concerns about that, that the shelter is funded through the end of July, and that there needs to be new management of that shelter going forward, because we're not seeing, I'm not seeing, York County Shelter Program come forward with any indication for a plan as to how that's going to transition or take place in the long term. The other thing that I would note is I'm not seeing communications from the York County Shelter Program as far as any continuation or revamp or overhaul of the emergency shelter operations in Alfred that were for adult emergency services. So there are other entities that are looking at options as to what might take place there in the future. So thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the council? All right. Steve, this was probably one of the more entertaining reports we've had with the babies down here entertaining us throughout your whole report. They were dancing and having a great time. So whoever brought the babies, thank you.
Well, they were critiquing him. You couldn't tell.
They were critiquing? Okay.
Sorry, Steve. It didn't retain much. It was the kids.
All right. And now under Communications and Presentations, the presentation of the Sanford Fire Department Promotions, and I'm going to turn this over to Chief Soucy. Come on down.
Thank you. Pauline.
Pauline.
This evening, I have the privilege to introduce the two newest promotions to the Sanford Fire Department leadership staff. Through the process of reviewing qualifications, interviews, testing, these members standing before you this evening have earned the leadership position they are about to receive. Effective July 1st, Lieutenant Scott Chase is promoted to the rank of Captain for the Sanford Fire Department. Captain Chase has served the city of Sanford for 22 years, or the past 11 years, as a lieutenant. Effective July 1st, Wayne Ham is promoted to the rank of Lieutenant for the Sanford Fire Department. Lieutenant Ham has served the city of Sanford for the past five years as a firefighter EMT. Both now are ready to begin their new chapter of their firefighter career in respected ranks for the city of Sanford and the Sanford Fire Department. As I try always to pass something to newly promoted officers, I leave them with this. Effective leaders will have the empathy to see things from the perspective of other people that their vision or decisions will ultimately have an impact on. They will constantly adapt to changing situations and environments, and they will exemplify high levels of emotional intelligence, inter and interpersonal skills. Always remember where you come from, the people that have led you to this point in your career, may have been good leaders, but that's what you can take forward and change for the better. As John Cunsey Adams said, "If your actions inspire others to dream more, learn more, and do more, and become more than you are a leader." I'd like to be the first to congratulate both of you on your great accomplishment. Captain Chase will be first.
Scott Chase, having served the city of Sanford proudly for the past 22 years, 11 of those years as a lieutenant EMT, is now ready to begin a new chapter of his firefighter career as the B ship captain. Do you, Scott Chase, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Maine as long as you shall continue to serve in thereof?
I do.
And do you, Scott Chase, swear that you will faithfully discharge, to the best of your abilities, upon you as captain for the Sanford Fire Department according to the Constitution and laws of this state, and in all respects, observe the provisions of the Charter and ordinances of the city of Sanford?
I do.
Wayne Ham, having served the city of Sanford proudly for the past five years as a certified firefighter and EMT, is now ready to begin a new chapter of his firefighter career as the C shift lieutenant. Do you, Wayne Ham, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and of the state of Maine so long as you shall continue to serve in thereof?
I do.
And do you, Wayne Ham, swear that you will faithfully discharge, to the best of your abilities, the duties incumbent upon you as lieutenant for the city of Sanford Fire Department according to the Constitution and laws of this state, and in all respects, shall observe the provisions of the Charter and ordinances of the city of Sanford?
I do.
You guys didn't think you were going to get away without pictures, did you? So anyone related to these two, come on down? And do we have people taking pictures so we can post this on our website? She is, okay, good. Thank you. The next group, please. Thank you. And now, if you don't want to stay, you're more than welcome to leave, and I'll just give you a few moments. And there is no public participation or public hearings or consent agenda. Pretty good. No. We're not done.
Can you go and leave?
We want the kids to stay.
Shake it off, chief. Shake it off.
Okay, let's go under Old Business now to confirm the findings and order adjudicating 26 Garrish Drive to be a dangerous building and a nuisance pursuant to 17 MRSA subsection 2851. And am I reading something wrong?
No, but I think Kendra Williams had her hand up, and she was hoping.
She wants to speak, but we don't have a motion yet.
We don't have a motion yet.
I'll try to ask public participation.
So Kendra, were you here for public participation?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't see you. Okay, Kendra, I'll wait on the next one, and we'll go under Public Participation. Go ahead, Kendra.
Okay, thanks. I'm Kendra Williams from Sanford. Earlier this year, I addressed you during public comment about the serious and longstanding issues with Grammar Road, a major heavily traveled thoroughfare in our city. And despite its importance, the road's never been constructed to serve the amount and type of traffic that it sees daily. And it's still unclear whether it's the city or the state that's responsible for it. If it's the city, it remains absent from the pavement management program and is narrow, crumbling, and poorly marked. Last summer's waterline work offered an opportunity for coordination, but it resulted in only patchwork repairs. So I continue to believe that the road's current state poses a serious safety hazard. And although public comment doesn't guarantee a response, I do want to thank Mayor Brink for following up with me directly and for sharing what she learned after looking into the matter. And I also appreciate that Councilor Martell raised the issue during council comments at your last meeting. That said, I still remain unclear on some key facts. Is Grammar Road currently classified as a state or a local road? And who ultimately is responsible for its maintenance and long-term reconstruction? This spring, I noticed the road was posted to limit heavy vehicle traffic, and I appreciated the temporary relief that was provided. But now the posting period has ended, the volume of heavy trucks and tractor trailers has returned. This road was never designed or constructed to accommodate that kind of traffic. The pavement is so deteriorated that there are more missing chunks than intact surfaces along the entire road, and there are no shoulders. Drivers have to swerve just to stay in their own lane or avoid the crumbling ditch, risking a head-on collision. And it's completely unsafe for pedestrians, bicyclists, and motorcycles. Grammar Road is the easternmost access road in Sanford, and it's the only one, other than Main Street, that is part of a direct access route from South Sanford to Springvale. Drivers living on the road or neighbors off of it must use it daily to go anywhere. I understand, the City Manager Buck, that the city is pursuing a partnership with the state to improve the road, but it may be two years before work can begin. This road, in its current condition, will not last two years. I noticed that the Public Works Department held an informational session recently for residents in the Butler area of Springvale, the Butler Street area. And I'd like to formally request that a similar session be held for residents who live on the road or in adjacent neighborhoods. We deserve the opportunity to hear directly from those responsible for road planning and maintenance and share our experiences and concerns. I appreciate all that you're doing, but I would also appreciate having some direct communication from the Public Works Department Director to discuss this issue. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Kendra. Moving on to Old Business. Confirm the findings and order adjudicating 26 Garrish Drive to be a dangerous building and a nuisance pursuant to 17 MRSA subsection 2851-2859. At the hearing held on June 17th, 2025, and authorize the City Manager to sign the findings in order for the City Council to have the city clerk record it in the Registry of Deeds and advertise or serve it upon the owner and parties in interest as required by law. Do I have a motion to confirm these findings? Maura?
Motion to confirm the findings for 26 Garrish Drive.
Second?
I'll second that.
And all those in favor? Oh, were there any questions or any comments? I'm sorry. All right. Thank you. You all set? Okay. Under New Business. In order to approve the road closure as presented for the Cruises with Friends Car Show on Friday, July 25th, 2025, from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM, as a rain date of August 1st, 2025. And Brady, are you presenting this?
I am not presenting this, no.
I can do something if you'd like. Oh, you are? Oh, okay.
Oh, come on down.
It's usually Kim. We were wondering where Kim was.
Kim's been out of town, so I'm...
Yeah, go for it.
Unfortunately, TV land has to hear you also. Please introduce yourself.
President of Strategies for Stronger Sanford and representing Friends of Downtown. Kim has had some emergencies out of state, off and on, and so she won't be chairing, but hopefully she will be here for the event and has been working behind the scenes, helping. So I presented the permit this year.
Thank you. Does the council have any questions or comments? Ann?
I would just comment that everything is similar to the prior year, except for a change in the traffic control, which is an improvement from feedback we received from the police department last year. So there'll be, as you saw in the packet, entry to the car show from both directions this year again, which is what we had done originally.
And we're having the food trucks there and stuff?
Food trucks.
That usually draws a lot more people, too.
Yeah, it'll be really fun. And then also, we're hoping that the restaurants and folks in the Main Street marketplace will participate with some fun specials and be open as well.
Oh, excellent.
And you're guaranteeing excellent weather?
We are, yes.
Yeah.
That's why it's not a Saturday.
Friday, we should succeed. Friday is okay. Nate?
Just a quick question. Is the intersection of Washington Street and Main Street going to be closed entirely? I think last year it was you were allowed to turn left onto Main Street. That's still the same? Okay.
That would be still the case.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions? Could I have a motion, please? Ann?
I'd make a motion to approve.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Hope you'll all be there.
Usually, we'll all be there. It's a great event.
Maura, can we use your tent?
No, I'll talk to you later.
Yes, but you have to help set it up. And I suggest getting a few of the police officers, they're quite good at it.
Where do we set a tent up?
Over the food court.
Oh, yeah, that is good. All right. Next, an order to accept 69 Brook Street, the former Lafayette School property, as return to the care custody... as return to the care, custody, and control of the city for non-school use as determined by the Sanford Board of Education pursuant to Title 20-A, Sections 4103. Do I have a motion, please? Maura?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the ownership of the Lafayette School from the Sanford School Department pursuant to their June 13, 2024 vote to return said school to the city as having been replaced pursuant to renovations and additions... Wait, no. I don't think I have to read that part. Do I? But anyway, I'm reading some of the affirmative motion section. But I vote to accept the ownership after the vote of the school department to relinquish the school to the city.
Thank you. Can I have a second, please? Jonathan?
I'll second that.
Any questions or concerns or anything? All those in favor? Thank you. And following, in order to approve the offer from King Weinstein on 69 Brook Street, former Lafayette School property, for $401,000, motion to be authorized by the city manager or assistant city manager to sign the purchase and sale agreement. Do we have any comments, or can we just... Do we need any comments? Michelle, we always look for the opportunity for you to speak. Go ahead.
Glad I could be here. Yes, so if you'll recall, the city was accepting offers for the former Lafayette School, and we did receive an offer that we are recommending that you accept from Mr. Weinstein for $401,000. And this is contingent... He has a due diligence period and then would close 45 days after. So they're looking to renovate to put market-rate housing in that space.
Thank you, fantastic. All right, do we have a motion, Maura?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the offer.
A second, Pete?
I'd like to second that.
Any questions or concerns? Ann?
More a comment in nature, but I just wanted to make sure the general public knows this was discussed in executive session and thought, had a lot of thought over a long period of time, going back like 10-plus years, right, had been put into the use of this really important building within a kind of a community of its own in that area. And we had a lot of grand ideas at certain times, but unfortunately, a lack of non-government entities stepping up with funding to create community centers or teen centers, or that really would take a lot of effort from another organization to step up and do that. And a lot of funding that doesn't exist in this current world that we're in. And so I just wanted to share that little piece of information. That question came up from somebody about why isn't it trained into a community center? And unfortunately, that's not possible right at this time. So we're hoping that that development really helps continue the improvements we're seeing in that neighborhood and the pride that people are putting into their homes there, and will really be a boost to the folks living there. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I'd like to share one of the other reasons is that building is expensive to keep going throughout the winter. So we didn't want to put that burden on the taxpayer, Sanford taxpayers. So that's why we finally made the decision to sell the building. And I think that this will actually enhance the neighborhood. It's good. Pete, do you have a comment?
Yeah. This city council's very proud moment doing this. I went to school there, and...
And the building's still standing.
It's still standing, and it was... I remember the thick layers of paint way back then. So I'm pretty excited that we pulled this off. So thank you for all your hard work.
All right.
That's where I would've gone if I hadn't gone to St. Thomas. Those, yeah, it's a nice school.
It is a nice school. We just recently went for a tour of the building, and it was very well-kept. It's a nice facility. All right, all those in favor? Thank you. Next is an order to approve the offer from Douglas and Shirley Spalding for the purchase of land located at 203 Beaver Hill Road for $15,000. Motion would allow the assistant city manager to sign the purchase and sale agreement. And I would like to point out that these were two of our fine teachers at the high school, who have now both retired. And this land is actually kind of landlocked. So I think this is fantastic that they're willing to purchase it.
Yeah, we had a great meeting with them, and we learned that they were former educators. So they shared some stories with us, so...
Yeah, Doug was my teacher.
Were there stories about Pete?
You can send the sympathy my way. And if he's watching, I'm making fun of him.
Not about anybody.
Okay, any questions of Michelle? Okay, may I have a motion, please? Nate?
I move to approve the offer.
Second, Pete?
I'll second that proudly.
All those in favor? Thank you. Next is in order to authorize and approve the city of Sanford Fire Department to lease purchase 60 new Harris XO-200P portable radios and accessories and finance the project in the principal amount of $342,765 awarded to MCB Leasing LLC with a term of seven years and at an interest rate of 6.35% fixed in annual payments shall be subject to annual appropriation. Captain, Chief Susie, any comments?
I was gonna leave. No, we kind of jumped on this ship earlier than what we really wanted to, to get it in as soon as we could because the tariffs are tearing us apart on electronics right now. So we went out, and the reason I'm bringing this to you is because it's a lease purchase over the seven years to lessen the burden on taxpayers. So that's why I'm here this evening. Nothing has changed in the plan. We did lose some items. Nothing to do with the radio, but the carrying cases. We dropped some of that to lessen some of the burden, to make up some of the percentage rate differences. But other than that, the project's moving forward.
All right, thank you. Any questions, Pete?
How long are these new radios supposed to last? I know, I read in there that they're gonna give you a favorable after-the-lease to purchase them for a penny or something. But how long are they gonna last?
The estimated time is 10 years. The radio that I'm using now is over 12. They're thinking between 12 and 14 years. So that's just about all the radios at the fire station are at that age.
Thank you. I just wanted everybody to get a timeframe on how are these and the necessary that you need them.
Thank you. Ann?
I was just gonna share, Chief, what's really helpful in the cover letters moving forward is a reference under the budget section to say this was approved in the '25, '26 fiscal year, just so... Well, honestly, it saves us time because we don't have to go check that it was approved, part of the CIP.
Yeah.
But if you can do that, it's really helpful so we know it was already part of a previous discussion.
Sure, yep.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, Jonathan?
I think I brought this up the last time we talked about the radios, but can you go over the quantity? 60 seems like an awful lot of radios for the size of the fire department. Is that including spares?
Sure. So there's 50... There hopefully will be 52 members there, three chiefs. So that's 55, and that only leaves five left for if something goes wrong on a fire ground and you lose one, or that gives us some spares on the truck or rotations if one's out for servicing.
Okay, thank you.
All right. May I have a motion, please? Maura?
I'd like to make a motion, it's a long motion. One, that a capital acquisition project, the project consisting of a lease purchase of 60 new Harris XL-200P portable radios and accessories is hereby approved. And two, that the financing for the project in the principal amount of $342,765 is awarded to MCB Leasing LLC with a term of seven years and at interest rate of 6.35% fixed and annual payments shall be subject to annual appropriation. And three, that the city manager of the city is hereby authorized to execute the lease purchase agreement and all of the documents reasonably necessary to accomplish the purpose of this vote, as the documents may require. And four, that the city council hereby confirms its determination that the term of the lease does not exceed 120% of the economic life of the project. And five, the anticipated total borrowing for 2025 will exceed $10 million, making this lease non-bank qualified and is thus not designated a bank-qualified, tax-exempt obligation of the city for the 2025 calendar year under the provision of Section 265B3 of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986 as amended.
Could I have a second? Ann?
And I would second that.
You don't want to repeat the whole thing? Okay.
I'm just like, really, that last part? Okay.
All those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed?
All abstain.
Abstain.
Why would you abstain? You have to give a reason for abstaining.
You can't abstain?
All opposed.
Thank you. Next is in order to authorize and approve the city of Sanford Fire Department to purchase a 2025 F-150 pickup truck with a cap, slide-out radio, and emergency lights. And the financing for the project in the principal amount not to exceed $70,278 is awarded to MCB Leasing LLC with a term of three years and at the interest rate of 6.05% fixed and annual payments shall be subject to annual appropriation. Do I have a motion? Maura?
I'd like to make a motion that a capital acquisition project consisting of the lease purchase of a 2025 F-150 pickup truck with a cap, slide-out, radio, and emergency lights is hereby approved. And two, that the financing for the project in the principal amount of $70,278 is awarded to MCB Leasing LLC with a term of three years and at an interest rate of 6.05% fixed and annual payments shall be subject to annual appropriation. And three, that the city manager of the city is hereby authorized to execute the lease purchase agreement and all of the documents reasonably necessary to accomplish the purpose of this vote, as the documents may require. And four, that the city council hereby confirms its determination that the term of the lease does not exceed 120% of the economic life of the project. And five, the anticipated total borrowing for 2025 will exceed $10 million, making this lease non-bank qualified and is thus not designated a bank-qualified, tax-exempt obligation of the city for the 2025 calendar year under the provisions of Section 265B3 of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986 as amended.
Thank you. Do I have a second, please? Nate?
I will second that.
Do we have any questions? Ann?
Thank you. I was just looking for clarification on this one in that I didn't see in the purchase documents or the lease documents, and I might have missed it, and I don't have my laptop tonight, so I can't go back to it, reference to the trade-in. Because I thought in our CIP plan for this calendar fiscal year, excuse me, there was a $12,000 offset to that CIP line item.
So currently, we're working on selling that for more than the amount that was listed? And the reason we jumped on this right now, this quick, is we saved $2,000 on this from what we'd actually budgeted out for the vehicle purchase by shopping around. We went to another dealer. They had exactly what we were looking for. But we're looking at a private sale on selling the current command vehicle for more and putting the cash back in.
Great, thank you. Nice job.
Any other questions? All those in favor? Thank you. All right, and now we're down to council comments. Anyone with any comments? Ann?
I have a little bit of a list. But first and foremost, I really want to do a preemptive shout-out of thanks to all of the folks that are gonna make the 3rd and 4th of July activities happen for us. I know our fire department puts a lot of effort into being there. Our police department, obviously, is heavily involved. And our public works and recreation department really pull out all stops for this event. I know codes puts in extra hours with the trucks that are there. So it's really a full-city-wide team event. And I don't know that all of the citizens who enjoy the food and the fireworks really realize the effort that gets put into it. So a shout-out of thanks for that. And then in addition, as folks have heard me say before, but July's a really fun and busy month. July 20, there is a donut-eating contest that anybody can reach out to me for more information about. July 25, as we approved tonight, there is a car show in the Main Street Marketplace area. July 28 is the Police Department's National Night Out, which I know some of us will be at. And then August 1, there's actually gonna be a block party in Springvale at Nassau Community Center that's gonna be really fun. So lots of great things happening. It's nice to see the community getting together. Thank you.
Any other comments? Yes, Pete?
Yep, parade's coming up pretty soon. Councils will be out there walking around, so look for some candy. I won't throw when Maura's looking, so we'll hand it out nicely. I won't throw when Maura's looking, so we'll hand it out nicely. And with all the...
It's an accident, it's Pete's fault.
Oh, yeah. And with all the events that are taking place across the country, with the Idaho, with the first responders, you might want to thank a first responder out here, because they risk a lot just answering a call. That's all I'll say on that one. So, thank you. Have a safe weekend.
Thank you. Any other comments? Anything for the agenda? Jonathan?
So I think I brought this up at the last meeting, but I'd like to request that we talk about the roads again, maybe have some management from the Public Works to talk about some things that people, citizens can look at to see where their road is on the list, if it's on the list. Maybe help with some of the concerns around paving. I know there's been Grammar Road, and then I think it's Center Road is one I've been hearing around a lot. Circle Drive? Sorry, thank you. So it's getting into paving season, so I'm hoping we can get some updates on what's gonna be next and how things are prioritized.
And also, what is a state responsibility and what is our community's responsibility? And I went yesterday, and I drove down, even though they had a closed road sign, I went on Circle Drive. And it's obvious why nothing will be done for a while there, because they're still digging the whole thing up. So, but the person who emailed, and I think you all got the same email I did, was very polite and wanted to make a suggestion that nothing be paved until it's totally done and ready to go, so we don't waste any of our funds, which I thought was an excellent idea. So I want to thank the gentleman for the email. It was fantastic. So we definitely... I think once a year, we do do that, but I think probably now with some of the concerns out there, it might be sooner than later.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. Anything else?
So could I comment on the roads?
Yes.
So, great comments earlier from a resident on Grammar Road. So that is a minor arterial collector for the state of Maine, so it is a shared responsibility. We paved it last eight-plus years ago with a five-year fix. So the five-year fix has gone away. It did not bond well, and so it's the delamination that's causing the issues that we see there today. The earlier comments are absolutely accurate and correct that the road has never been fully constructed, so it needs to have a full box cut in multiple sections. There's pavement on, near the top of ledge, so there's water intrusion there. You see the alligator cracking. There's alligator cracking in the lower areas, lack the appropriate ditching and such under that. So the city paved it the last time in recognition that that would get us to the point that the state would come forward and participate. That hasn't happened. Our Public Works Director is working extensively with the state to bring this to their attention, and he's made an application for a municipal partnership initiative, which would provide us with nearly $800,000 worth of funding to bolster the remainder. We're estimating that's a million-dollar fix. It's a million dollars all day long. So we have that in the pipeline. July 15 would be the meeting for all of this information, so Director Hill will be here. He's going to be doing a public hearing on the South Sanford Public Partnership Initiative. That's the design work for the bicycle and pedestrian improvements in the sidewalks and such in South Sanford, from the roundabout up through the center of shopping and southward down to Patriots Lane. So he'll be here to present on that and hold a public hearing on that. He'll also be here that night presenting on the Raze Grant. There's some updated information on that, where that is in in its finalization of its design and the timing, given the current environment that we're in for funding. Everything's always up in the air, so he'll be presenting on that. And we also anticipate, we closed, books closed out yesterday, end of year, so I'll be working with our finance director. We anticipate on July 15 to be able to come forward with a recommendation for unexpended funds from the Public Works and Environmental Services Departments to go in combination to request that the council allow those unexpended funds to go forward for road work for this coming year, and the director will have a series of recommendations on that. We're well aware of Circle Drive, that's a water department project ongoing there, so they're going to participate with us as far as the paving of that road once that work is done. So Director Hill will be here, we can go through all of those. I'll ask him to bring here's five-year road programs, we can look at what's encompassed in that as well, on top of the, hopefully, additional funding that the council will allow us to claw back from unexpended funds, as you've done in the last number of years, to put out onto the side streets.
So that would be a good meeting for Kendra Williams and maybe her neighborhood to come to?
Yes.
Get their answers there. Okay, fantastic. Thank you. All right.
I have one other thing, and it may not necessarily need to be on our agenda, but the Rotary down by Shaw's needs some mowing or something. That's the first thing people see when they come into Sanford or come through Sanford. I'd really like to see that maintained a little better than it has been.
I thought our garden group was going to... They had a plan for that.
Yeah, there's a lot of plans for the Rotary. None have come to fruition yet, so...
So like paving it over would be a good idea?
No, my suggestion was, you know, one study was a million-dollar fix and all this kind of deal of art and such under that. There should be some hardscaping in there, so there can be some appropriate shrubbery with hardscaping in there that won't require mowing and such under that, because it's a dangerous place to be out there doing maintenance work on and stuff like that. The last improvements that was done was funded through the Rotary. Was it Rotary or Corner? Rotary Club? With the recommendation for the plantings that were there now, that they were going to be able to take care of themselves in that harsh, salt, heat, dry environment and such under that, it didn't pan out well. So I think some hardscaping in there, my reference to, you know, bark and stone and such as that, cap that off and beautify it until such time as the city might be able to afford to do the envisioned artwork or something of that nature.
Madam Mayor, may I just share an additional comment? The Sanford-Springvale Beautification Group, which exists under Strategies for Stronger Sanford, went out weekly all last summer, and I think has plans to do that again this summer, to get trash and weeds out. And though it does look wild, I guess, or maybe people don't like the appearance of it, it actually, when you sit down and speak with the woman, Bridget, who's in charge of it, it is actually filled with all native grasses that are supposed to look like they do, as well as native shrubs and flowers that are resistant and hurty. So she actually went over a map of the roundabout, and what's there is actually thriving and is supposed to look that way, but maybe it's just not, you know, what people are used to in terms of like a wild roundabout look. But I just wanted to share that there have been efforts made, and that trash is significantly less than it used to be, and things are, if you actually were to park and look across, you might notice it's actually much better kempt than it has been historically. So I just wanted to make sure there was some kudos to that group that really has been trying to make an effort with zero funding and all volunteer time, so...
Thank you.
I appreciate that.